Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our November School Board meeting. We are super excited to see all of you here this evening. Can't wait to visit with the students and our staff about the exciting things that are going on in our district. I'll call this meeting to order. LaMista Schultz is gonna offer a pledge or lead us in the pledge. With that said, I'd like to read something concerning our prayer that we hold, our invocation that we hold as we start our meeting. Dear Sholo, our mountain community has always had a rich history of religious involvement in city and school governance. We are proud of that religious involvement. We know that having a strong community of faith that backs our families and schools is what makes Sholo a great place to raise our children and to call home. The diversity of our students' families and the many different expressions of faith is a strength to our community. As duly elected school board members, it is our duty and responsibility to represent and respect all of our students and their families. With that said, for tonight only, we will have a moment of silence to start the board meeting so that all individuals can meditate or pray silently in a way that suits their beliefs. From now on, we will continue to have an invocation to start our meeting. Tonight, we publicly express our love and appreciation for our teachers, for the dedication and sacrifice that they make for our children. We honor all our school staff who make our schools a wonderful place to learn. We express our gratitude for the many parent volunteers who donate their time and resources so willingly. We praise our local city officials and business partners for the tremendous support that they provide to us each and every day. Finally, we love and appreciate our children and their families the most. Please join me in a 30-second moment of silence. Thank you very much. I will... Okay, LaMista, if you would, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, eternal, just.
Thank you. We need you guys to come out every meeting, so it sounds like that. It sounds so good, having your voices. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda and any change that might... one might want to make.
I motion we move the public comment up to item 6.7 before we start action items.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Item 4.1, approval of minutes, please.
I move to approve the minutes as presented. A second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 5.1, ratification of expenses and payable vouchers, tax credits and activity accounts. Ms. Davis?
I just wanna make a note that you'll notice that on the expense vouchers, they're actually quite high this month. We made an overpayment to the school facilities board a while back. We did have to refund that back to them, which was about $350,000. So I just wanted to make note that that's why the expense vouchers are quite high this month. Thank you.
I make motion to a previous presenter.
A second?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 6.1, student and staff recognition. Dr. Farnsworth.
We are thrilled to have the opportunity to recognize several of our student groups. So we're gonna start off tonight with the principal of Nicholas Homestead. If you could bring up your two students and your staff member. And before Ms. Jones starts to speak, I think it's notable that we have some staff members from Nicholas. If the staff members from Nicholas could stand up because they're here to recognize, I think it's neat. Thank you for being here.
Mrs. Jones, before you get going, if you have a cellphone, please put it on silent for us for the meeting. Thanks.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Farnsworth, Ms. Shaley, who has been amazing the last few months for me, and community members. My name is Chris Jones, and I'm the principal of Nicholas Homestead Elementary. I'm here to celebrate two students and one of our amazing teachers. This is Alexandra, this is Thane, and this is Mrs. Norick. So I wanna tell you first about our students. This is Alex. So I sent out, instead of me choosing, I sent out a message to my teachers and staff. And I actually reached out to Whipple Ranch as well because Nicholas's students were Whipple's kids. And Whipple's kids are Nicholas's kids. And so I reached out to them as well. So I asked them what they could tell me about these particular students. First of all, who did they want to choose and who did they feel best represented? And these are two fifth graders. And then when I reached out to Whipple, I said, "Can you tell me something about them in their younger years?" And so this is Alex. Alex, it says, "I was Alex's kinder teacher. She was the sweetest, kindest, most amazing girl, very bright, hard worker, but her greatest attribute is her sweet spirit. What an awesome pick." Another teacher said, "I had the pleasure of teaching Alex in second grade. I now get to work with her on the student council. She's an amazing student. She has always been responsible and a student that can be counted on by your teacher. She sets an example for her peers and is truly what a student council representative should be. Alex is hardworking and one of the most respectful students that I have ever had." And one more says, "Alex is an excellent example of a Nicholas Homestead Elementary Cougar student. She is always polite to others and takes on a leadership role with her peers. She has an amazing work ethic. She turns in all of her work and time and takes her time to complete her work correctly." So, nice job, Alex. Okay, next up is Thane. Thane is a responsible student. He has excellent attendance, is polite to others, and works hard in class. He is a great role model to others in his grade level. Thane is also on top of his assignments and turns them in on time. In PE, he was very respectful, always helped me when I needed it, and was a leader during activities. He encompasses what being a Nicholas Homestead Elementary Cougar is all about because he is an excellent student and a great overall kid. And then his final comment was, "He is an incredibly smart and talented young man. He tries hard on all aspects of life. He loves sports and school and gives each the determination of a young-driven student. Thane will go on to do incredible things in his future, and I look forward to watching him grow." And then finally, we have our teacher. And so, once again, I reached out to my staff and I said, "Tell me, tell me what you think really represents." We actually had a lot of nominees, great things. We read it at our last staff meeting. But Mrs. Norick warmed up with more votes than anybody else. And I wanna share with you things that her peers said about her. And she doesn't know. I didn't read hers. She has led and served on several committees and is always willing to help. She also runs her own classroom and is a student favorite. Another teacher said, "She is always willing to help. She will never say no to anything, and she does a lot in our school. She is a good public speaker and has the best interest of the school at heart. She is organized. She holds everyone to the same high standard, students and teachers. She is always willing to help, and she does so much for our school." Another teacher said, "She has been a part of the Sholo Unified School District for a while now. She is presentable, caring, and takes the time to know her students." And finally, it says, "She takes on so many extra responsibility and works hard to support her team. I appreciate her dedication to PBIS and her ability to connect effectively with the students in our school." So, this is note. I have something for you.
Thank you.
And... You're welcome again. You're welcome. And then... You're welcome.
So we're gonna do pictures. So parents, if you wanna come up to the front, we're gonna have our students and our teacher and the principal come over here. And we're gonna get pictures. So, parents, if you wanna get closer, let's kinda get centered this way a little bit. Over here. Over here. Over here. There we go. Right? Perfect.
Oh, see, they moved on us. We were in this.
Did everyone get one? All right. Thank you.
Can we shake your hand? Do you have hands enough?
Congratulations.
Not just you.
Thank you, Father.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Congratulations.
Congrats, Thane. Thank you.
Congratulations, sweetie. Congratulations.
Dr. Farnsworth, before we move on, are mom and dad, mom and/or dad here of the parents? Can you stand up, please, so I know who you are? Stand up, please. So, these successful children are successful because mom and dad are awesome. And we're grateful for you and for what you do at home to help them be so successful in our schools. Thank you so much. Was that it for that? 6.2, Junior High Cross Country Recognition. Dr. Farnsworth and Mr. Hoffmeyer and/or.
We have some silly kids that love to run for fun. I don't know why. But if they could all come up, the coach, if you guys could come on up.
I'll present Andrew Grimhall.
Stand right here first. Stand right here. Not yet.
Yeah, stand right there with your coach so we can see your wonderful faces.
This is Andrew Grimhall, his dad and his brother. They helped with this group, and I will let him talk because this is their group. They're outstanding. Outstanding.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to say a few words mostly to these guys. You know, running is 10-15% skill and ability, and the rest is mental, right? It really is. These guys had talent, but they also did, they pushed. Most of our practices were minimal complaining. There was a few when it was hot, right? That's normal. We had, but during the races, we had people fall. We had people get scrapes. Never quit. We had people throwing up, passing out. Never quitting. These guys wanted it. So these guys went on. They pushed hard. It was an honor to coach them. We won almost every meet that we attended. We ended up going to the championship and got first for the boys, second for the females.
Nice.
That's it?
That's it.
Hoffmeyer, anything else?
They were outstanding. They had first White Mountain League cross-country season, and the boys won it, and the girls were second. So that was outstanding. They both won our meet that we hosted Cougar Invite. They both won that. And yeah, they're just outstanding.
Can you tell us a little bit about the medals that some of them are?
Yeah, so these are mostly medals they won during the season. We did good. We had, in order to get first place, cross-country, it's kinda like golf. You're trying to get the lowest score, so you have to get most of your runners in the front. So we got many medals throughout the three seasons. So not all of them brought their medals, but we do have, I think all of these, some of these might be other years, but I think most of these are this year.
Were there any individual, like, do they do state champions individually or anything like that? Okay.
We did get, Matty took first as state champion, right? And Grant took first as state champion. I think we got second and third and some other places too, but...
Nice.
I know we did. Jerome, Jerome was up there. Second. Colby got second for the girls at state, so...
How'd you bring your medals?
She didn't bring her medals. Very impressive kids right here.
Great. Thank you so much for all your efforts for them and helping them to be all that they can be. We'd love it if we could shake your hands and then take a picture.
Let's take a picture and do...
First, and then you guys start, when we shake hands, start there and move this way, and we'll just...
I guess we're doing hands first.
You wanna do hands first? All right. Right here. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Great job. Thank you for representing us. You guys are awesome. We're proud. Love you guys. You're the best. Thank you. Congratulations. Good job. Thank you. We appreciate you. You guys are awesome. Thank you. Good job, Coach. Thank you.
Good job, man.
Thank you, Coach. Thank you, Coach. Good to see ya. Good job, young man. Thanks for representing. Y'all are awesome.
All right, spread out over here too.
While they, while they get ready, I'm gonna take some personal leeway here. I have a nephew here. I'd say it's my genes, but it's my wife's side, so I have nothing to do with it.
Scooch in. Look at your principal. Scooch in so we can all fit in.
Okay, this low row, you guys are gonna start right here.
You know.
Good job.
About three. One, two, three.
We're Cougars!
Parents, if there's more parents that want photos, come on up. We're not done yet. We got one more.
All the haircuts.
You can get closer. All right. Thank you.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
I think moms, dads wanna head out. Thanks for coming. Love having you here today. As they file out... Thank you all for coming. We're gonna move to item 6.3, Feast of Carols Promotion. Ms. Whipple. It's the most wonderful time of the year.
Right.
It is, and you just make it all the better.
Yeah, we love this. Yes, I hear. So we have a couple of things tonight. First of all, we would like to announce, as Showbiz gathers behind me, we would like to announce the community and the school district that this is the 40th anniversary of Feast of Carols this year. So it's a big celebration. We are super excited to perform Year 40 and present it to the community this year. The kids have been working hard for the last few weeks, already getting it going, and we've got a cast of about 100 kids involved in the production this year. So we are super excited, and I know alumni from all over the years have already been contacting me about coming back. We're doing a big alumni reunion as well. So that's a tribute to Scott Gentry and also to all these kids that keep it going and want to keep the tradition alive in this community, and it is very unique. So we just want everybody to know that Feast of Carols will be happening December 5th through 7th. The shows will be at 7:00 PM at Whipple Ranch Elementary School. There will be dinner theater shows. The tickets go on sale next Tuesday from 4:00 to 6:00 PM at the Sholo Auditorium. And we will be selling those next week, Tuesday through Friday, and then the Monday and Tuesday before Thanksgiving. Those will also be for sale. I would highly recommend that you get them quick because they are gonna go fast this year, especially with all the alumni wanting to come back and see the show and be a part of it with these amazing kids also. And I'm grateful for these kids and the hard work they put in. So we're excited to have Year 40 take place. It's a huge milestone for a very special tradition. So come and join us and join in the feasting and song, as we say. It's a feast of food as well as a lot of music. So we hope you all come and join us December 5th through 7th. And then also, while we're here, I would like to recognize this group as well as our Advanced Women's Choir. They went to the State Choral Festival on October 24th, and both groups performed exceedingly well. Cassidy and Easton are modeling the plaques that we received that day. The Advanced Women's Choir received a Superior with Distinction, and Showbiz also received a Superior with Distinction. And what that means for those of you that don't understand the music world, they got a superior rating for their singing, and both groups scored 90 or above. So we were super proud of that, and Showbiz scored extremely high that day. They got a 97 out of 100 from the judges, so we are super proud of that. And then the with distinction award came because they also demonstrated musicianship. And that is reading music on site. And they had five minutes to go through 16 measures of a song and learn it without singing it. And then they had to perform it for a judge, and then they had two minutes to perfect it and then sing it as perfect as they could for the judge. And the Women's Choir received an excellent on that, and then Showbiz received a Superior on that as well. They were the high score of the day on site reading. So that is a tribute to these kids. They're not only singers, but they are also musicians. And so I want to give accolades to them for the hard work that they put in, and I push them hard, but they respond, and they know what to do. They can read music, and they can sing it, and they love it. And so, with that being said, I just wanna congratulate them on a very successful year so far, and we're looking forward to great things that are gonna continue to happen this year. So we are also going to do a music presentation for you, one of our Christmas songs. We will be performing Carol of the Bells to get everybody in the festive mood for the season, so... Hoopka the bells swing, silver bells all seem to say, Hoop cares away. Christmas is here, ring, you can cheer, ding, dong, and dong, make and the ho. Ding dong, ding dong, that is the song, wait, joyful ring, hoop, carol, yee. One seems to hear words of the cheer from everywhere filling the air. Hoopka the bells, raising the sound, all holler, turn, sound, the rite. Giddy, giddy, ring, while people sing songs of the cheer, Christmas is here. Ding dong, ding dong, make and the ho. Ding dong, ding dong, make and the ho. Hoopka the bells, sweet, silver bells, all seem to say, Hoop cares away. Christmas is here, ring, you can cheer, ding, dong, and dong, make and the ho. Ding dong, ding dong, that is the song, wait, joyful ring, hoop, carol, yee. One seems to hear words of the cheer from everywhere filling the air. Hoopka the bells, raising the sound, all holler, turn, sound, the rite. Giddy, giddy, ring, while people sing songs of the cheer, Christmas is here. Ding dong, ding dong, make and the ho. Ding dong, ding dong, make and the ho. Ding dong, ding dong, make and the ho. Hoopka the bells, sweet, silver bells, all seem to say, Hoop cares away. Ding dong, ding dong. Thank you so much, and we hope to see you all at Feast.
Thank you.
I think we should get a picture with the board.
I think we should too. I will, I will say that there is nobody better than Sholo. No one.
Chris, please, Anne, you have to do your levels.
Yeah.
You're like when I FaceTime the kids.
One, two, three. Great job, you guys.
Beautiful.
You guys are awesome. Thank you. You're my friend. Item 6.4 Navette C Ted Presentation. Mr. Weber, so glad you're here.
Good to be here tonight. Thankfully, I'm not singing, so don't.
We're glad too.
I am always grateful to be here, and they're always a tough act to follow, but I love coming in November because it just kind of opens up the Christmas season. So appreciate, appreciate being here tonight. Um, I just want to take a second and say thank you. Cal McNeil represents Sholo Schools on our governing board. He's very faithful and being with us. Appreciate working with Jerry as director, and Brandy Gray is our career technician. And notice the order here. I'm not saying thank you to Ben and Jerry. I need to say Jerry first and Ben. And appreciate Dr. Farnsworth in having me here tonight. Just always grateful to be a part of your district. Um, I'm gonna skip some of this background things because I know that all of you have heard me before, but I do want to just remind everybody, you know, our primary purposes. We want our students to be able to get gainful employment right out of high school. That's our goal. And so how do we do that? That's bringing in a funding stream to Sholo Schools, and I'll, we'll go over those numbers shortly. And then for those students that it works with, if they want to leave for a three-hour block, come to the college campus here in Sholo or in Snowflake and participate in some CTE programs there, and I'll, and I'll review that list because we do have some new ones this year. So let's jump right to the numbers. So if we notice here, uh, if we go back just a few years, FY '23, 370,000, then '24, we had 412. And I'm excited to announce that based on your attendance at this point, and once again, this is based on the number of students you have in current tech get programs right here at Sholo High School, our, our estimate is 474,000. And so that puts you over 9 million that since you joined Navette in 2000, you were one of the original five districts. And so we're excited about bringing that funding into your district, and, uh, and so like I say, we'll go over, we'll go over those numbers. Um, and where does that money go? It goes into these programs. So you've got, uh, a tremendous faculty in your CTE department. Uh, there is a lot of work, a lot of documentation that goes into current technical education. Uh, the state provides this funding, provides that extra .25 ADM for the students that are in your CTE programs, but there's a lot that goes with that. We're supposed to be showing proof that we're testing them, that we're providing opportunities for them to earn an industry credential. And, and so I just salute all of your CTE faculty here at Sholo High School that are willing to jump through all these hoops. It is not easy to do CTE. There's a lot of work. And in recent years, I've talked to you a lot about the Arizona Department of Education monitoring, and we kind of finished that up. It kind of bled into FY '23, and in fact, Jerry still has nightmares about that, I think. But our next round is coming up, uh, in 2026, so it's, it's upon us for the next round. And I'm grateful to announce that we've got, we contracted with Winslow Schools and asked their director Penny Brimhall to help our teachers prepare for this next round. And so she's been providing professional development, instructional best practices for your new teachers, your classroom management for new teachers, but she's also gonna focus her efforts now on the monitoring and getting prepped for this next round. And so there's a tremendous amount of documentation. It's more than just, uh, the teacher saying, hey, here's my current tech get certificate. It's they have to document all the program standards. They have to document work-based learning. Um, there is so much that goes into, into that. And so Penny will be coming around to Sholo High School teachers and looking at what they have so far, giving recommendations so that we're ready when ADE comes. So they'll be, they'll be here in just a couple of years. And as always, the auditor general is always asking for more information. Um, we, they just sent another, uh, another follow-up, uh, that was released to the public a couple of weeks ago. And one of the things that they're nailing us on is that they want us to be able to show that we've placed more students. And that's, that's a tricky thing to be able to track your students once they leave your high schools. Their emails change. Now, you know, people like John will know some of those students, you know, he's, he's an old timer. I, I'm an old timer and even so I can say that. So we know some of these families, but some that move away or that we don't know as well, it's hard to get a hold of them. And so we're trying our very best to beef up how we contact them and be able to track them as well as we can because they're gonna continue to want that kind of documentation. So my hat goes off to your faculty here. Um, like I say, we're providing all the training, if any kind of training that helps your CTE teachers teach the credential, the industry credential and the program standards. We use our 301 funding, and so your teachers just have to sign up for it. We pay for the registration, fees, travel, meals, we do all that. And we also pay $1,000 a year for you to be, for all your CTE teachers to be part of the Curriculum Consortium, and that is a treasure trove of turnkey lessons that they can make their own, they can modify to make it fit their teaching style. And so we do, we are able to provide a lot for that. So in a nutshell then, we're grateful for that 474,000 we can bring you this year. Be proud. You're, if there's only one other district that's over 9 million, but you're one of them. And so that says a lot for planning, for, uh, Jerry and Ben, AKA Ben and Jerry's leadership. We're grateful for them. You've added programs, you've brought in new teachers, and that is not an easy thing. It is hard to find CTE teachers. Well, it's hard to find any teachers today, really, but particularly in the CTE field, they can make so much more money in their fields. And so for them to come, take a cut in pay and teach in our high schools, I just am very grateful for them. So I'll open it up to any, any questions that, that you might have for me.
Ready? We just want to express our gratitude for what you do on that end that helps our students so much.
We appreciate that. Uh, just, just a, just a brief comment. We did add industrial technology trades this year. We're excited about that program because it does offer alternative energy, HVAC certification, and industrial technology certification. So they actually have three career paths for that one, and they have access to behavioral health if they're willing to go to, uh, Snowflake Campus. So we continue to add new programs. We're grateful to be able to do that. So thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, and I'll let you get to your agenda.
Thank you so much.
And thank you, Jerry.
Item 6.5 Principal Reports. Anybody have any questions or comments or anything on the principal reports?
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you so much. I know that's a little added extra thing that you have to do, but we really appreciate it. Lets us, yeah, yeah, we, we want to hear all the good things and, and, uh, have somewhat of a pulse on what's going on district-wide. So we're really excited and appreciative to get those. So thank you so much. Item 6.6 Superintendent Report. Dr. Farnsworth, please.
Thank you, Mr. Board President. Um, in my report, as you can see, and I, I want to start off by saying thank you for our principals. Um, the letter grades from the Arizona Department of Education came out. Every campus showed growth in their total score. Um, even though some of the grades may not have changed from an A to a B, they all showed growth. Um, as you know, the district is rated as a B, B district, so we're, we're happy about that, but we're not settled on that. Um, the high school, first time in their history getting an A, Linden is an A. Junior High, Mrs. Clark, she's here. They missed being an A-rated campus by less than a point. Had the state rounded up, she would be an A campus. Um, that's how, it's less than half a point, correct? Probably .3 tenths of a point. Um, yes.
Yeah, that's a big deal.
Lot of hard work, lot of hard work on every campus. Nicholas is a, is a B-rated school, and they showed tremendous growth. Whipple does not get a grade because they're a K2 campus, um, but they're doing lots of great things. So very, very pleased with our principals and our students.
Mr. Farnsworth, can I make a quick, is there any way that we can join with those schools and have some sort of a celebration on those really super increases and, and excellent work? If there's any way that we can do something, even if it's just to get together and have hot chocolate or a candy bar or an ice cream or something, it would be really great if we could. Yes, ice cream. If, if we could do something like that, that we as a board could express, you know, how grateful we are for them, I, I'd appreciate if we could finagle that somehow.
We can do that. So maybe we can do like school board visits and we can package that with their congratulations.
Ice cream in every campus, is that what you're saying?
That's what I heard you say.
I'm in for it.
Shaila's thrilled. I'm super thankful for, again, our building principals. I've, I've had them develop SMART goals for their campus, and I've met with them, with Mrs. Cosgray. Um, I've complete, completed my listening tour, and I will be formulating kind of an action plan based upon those three questions that you see in my report. Um, the fire marshal, he came and visited with our principals, and so we're making sure our buildings are safe. Um, lots of facility-type stuff that we're working on, which need, needs to happen. I had the great opportunity of going to Whipple to read to the, the kindergarten classes again. It's, it's super fun. You never know what they're gonna say, so that's always fun to go to. I do want to report to the board that we've, we've had some call to the public um, where, where members of the community have, have almost attacked the school board and myself about open records. Um, I just want to report to you that in that, in those cases, we have satisfied every open records request that was sent to us. We sent emails, we provided documents. And when I met with these two individuals, and, and this is for the people here and also for the people watching from home, and when I asked those two individuals, why hadn't they received it, they opened their email in my office and said, oh, here it is. And so I just wanted to point out that we have satisfied all those requests, we've honored all those requests, and they did not check their email, and hence they made those accusations to you and to me, which were unfounded. Um, I also want to point out, this is very, very big. The Community Fast is coming, and so here, here is a brochure. We have it at the school. We post it on Facebook. We have it posted over our social media. This is a great community event that the city of Sholo does on behalf of the community. It starts November the 17th through the 23rd, that we are to donate, uh, the cost of one or two meals to this Community Fast. Um, we can send this out, but it's on social media. There's a QR code where members can donate. And then there's a culminating event on November the 24th in the Sholo Auditorium at 5:00 PM, which I highly recommend that we, we be there because it's a great community event. I'm excited to be there for the first time. Um, and as you can see, Mr. Board President, there are a lot of events for November and December. Please put those on your calendar. In fact, to your point, if you look at Linden Elementary, they're gonna have a celebration as an A campus on December the 2nd, so you all are invited. Um, but we have tons of concerts, activities, recognitions, um, happening all through the month of November and December, which is gonna be very busy, but we're excited to engage in those activities. And that is my report.
Perfect.
Thank you for assisting all the activities.
Yeah.
Coming up, I, I really appreciate that. Thanks for your report.
Anything else on 6.6? Thank you. Item 6.7 Call to the Public. Um, I notice I have, uh, four folks who would like to visit, and, uh, everyone indicates the same item that they would like to talk about. Um, so in the interest of time, if, uh, if someone says something that is good enough for you, then that would be great. Um, we'll begin with Pastor Jim, please.
Thank you. From your opening statement, I understand that you said that today was only for a moment of silence because I was gonna protest that we were taking the prayer out or we're leaving the prayer in. So I would like to say thank you. Thank you all for considering our religious freedoms, okay? And, uh, I, so I'm not here to complain. I'm here to say thank you because I know a lot of times, and I like to see smiles across the board here. So, but with that, I would like to pray for you, if you don't mind. And, and thank you for bringing up that fast and compassion too, because we're gonna be there and we're gonna be celebrating that for the community, and I encourage you guys to please put that on your calendar. So I pray, Heavenly Father, I thank you for this board, and thank you for the president, the vice president, and all that are sitting here now, that you would continue to work with them, and they would work together for our community for the sake of our children and the, for the sake of our freedoms and the Constitution of Arizona and the Constitution of the United States. I thank you for Superintendent Farnsworth as he continues to dig into this about the Constitution and teaching it in our schools, as I understand he's still investigating this and want to prepare that for next year. But most of all, Lord God, we thank you that you are here with us in the power of the Holy Spirit and that, uh, we can all get along in our differences and in our freedoms. In Jesus' name I pray, amen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Janelle Sterner, please.
Good evening. My name is Janelle Sterner, and I also want to just again, um, tell you about 1 Thessalonians 5:17. That says, pray without ceasing. So I'm again, thank you. It was a little hard. I wish you guys would have said that at the beginning. I know you went to executive session regarding the prayer invocation at your session. I just wish you would have been able to do that out in public, but I do thank you also again, and I'm also gonna pray over us too. So dear God, we just thank you for your guidance for everybody here tonight, and we ask you that these board members make a good decisions for Sholo School District and the community. Give us rest from any worries, give them peace and us peace to trust in the outcome for what we vote, they vote on in this meeting. Guide them safely and everybody here to let our ears hear what they have, and we ask to let us awaken to your love in the morning in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. So thank you again, and I really enjoy and thank you that you guys are moving the public comment at a different time, so at least we're able to. You say you want to hear from the public, so I appreciate that you do want to hear from the public, but I also enjoy that the little kids were able to, you know, be able to, um, dance and sing and be, you know, recognized. So thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is the mic working?
No, it's not.
Do we have no mic?
There's a mic up there. If you, whoever comes up next, if you pull it towards you, kind of like this, it's on a tether. If you pull it towards you, you can hear just a little bit better. Yeah, the city changed mics. We're grateful the, they let us use this. Okay, next is Janet LeBlanc. If you just, if you just pull it forward like I've done and set it right before you kind of by that, yeah, just pull that towards the, the mouse there. Keep pulling. I think it'll go. There you go.
How's that?
Well, it's better.
Okay. Hi, I'm Janet LeBlanc, and I came here tonight to defend the innovation, and I was glad to see that you guys, um, made a decision to go back to longstanding tradition of keeping our innovation and prayers in before a public meeting. Um, I was disheartened that you had to go into a, an executive session, um, and not be transparent about your discussion on that, um, but I want to thank you for what you're doing to keep it, keep it intact. It's, it's been a tradition since the establishment of Sholo in 1972, and I was breaking my heart to see that go, so thank you.
Thank you. Is it Ravon? I'm sorry, Ravon Bowers?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, I got it right. Sorry.
It's a hard name. Um, hi, my name's Ravon Bowens. Um, I live on Sholo Bluff, my neighbor. I'm a master's math educator and remediator tutor, 22-year military veteran. Um, I appreciate your moment of silence today. Um, I just think it's important to clear up the confusion about school prayer. Um, there was, of course, in 2008, Greece Township versus Galloway that talked about legislative prayers, that they are actually are constitutional with limitations. On the other hand, and I'll read this directly, school boards may not open their meetings with prayer. with prayer. It's illegal. Over 50 years, a Supreme Court precedent has firmly ruled that prayer at school events is unconstitutional. School board meetings are school-sponsored events, they are not legislative meetings, and the courts have repeatedly recognized the importance of protecting children from school-sponsored prayer in the Constitution. I believe the school board knows this, I know your lawyers know this, tradition doesn't matter. Children and adolescents are just beginning to get their own belief systems, they absorb lessons from adults about what are right and wrong. They are not allowed to be exposed to religious and school prayers unless they're in a religious school. Navajo County, Arizona, and the United States are becoming more secular for a reason. Many people reject religion and even if they're in the minority, this school board must honor their beliefs. You practiced one of the best alternatives to school prayer tonight, which is to just have a moment of silence. The other things that you can do is to say the Pledge of Allegiance. The people who don't agree with the part of "under God" introduced in the 50s don't have to say it. You could read the governing board's mission statement. You could open with a secular invocation that has no religious proffer or for people who don't believe, something for them too. Or you could pray privately before the meeting. Prayers in for boards are not for the audience, they are for you guys to see if you can do the right thing, not us. I'm going to leave this with you. It has offers of secular indications that you can try. There are pull-off points here so that your lawyers can once again affirm that you are doing something illegally and wrong. I know that we have pending lawsuits already for children who are not being treated correctly in the Cholo Unified School District and that's a shame. The people that brought this to your attention have done the right thing, they are now gonna be targeted because the school board is not doing the right thing and that's your fault. I hope this doesn't lead to another expensive lawsuit. I'm a taxpayer here, I'm a 22-year military veteran and a lifelong educator.
We're at three minutes.
Okay, so I want to leave this with you.
Leave it with me.
Follow it.
That'll work. That works.
To you.
Perfect.
I don't want to pay for another expensive lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your comments. Moving on to item 7.1, Classified Personnel Transfers, Resignations, Terminations. Dr. Farnsworth.
So we have quite a few transfers and resignations. Many of those are paraprofessionals, so I'd just advise you to take a moment to look at all the different transfers that are taking place and resignations, which is unfortunate. We do want to keep our staff here and trained. There's a variety of reasons why they are leaving. And then we do have a couple of terminations where they have just stopped coming to work and we're in the process of asking you, the board, to terminate them officially because they have not communicated with us.
I move to approve all classified personnel and employees' actions as presented.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
There's two names under terminations in the top part, but then in the executive content, there's three names. Are we just doing the two?
We're just doing the two. So I had the third name stay in there because there was some communication mishaps at the campus level and so that person is still here because there was some confusion about why they were absent. And so when we started digging and asking questions, we have some more information regarding their absences, so their name was officially removed.
Okay.
Because of that. So I just left that in there because I wanted to make sure I communicated that to you.
Okay, but that is not included in what we're voting on?
Correct.
Great, then I'll second.
I have a motion to second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes. 7.2, Certified Transfers, Resignations, Terminations. Dr. Farnsworth, please.
So this individual that you see there, she is a current fourth grade teacher and we were able to find a fourth grade teacher because she has skills as an interventionist and so we're gonna take her out of the classroom so she can be an interventionist across the campus and we have also found a teacher to kind of fill that fourth grade spot. So that is that recommendation there. The other one that was moving from a paraprofessional to a teacher, she obtained a CTE certificate, which is a licensed teaching certificate. She does not have the correct certificate for what she's teaching, but that's one of our areas of improvement. Like, it's hard to attract people that teach that specific field, but she's doing great. We're super proud of her and glad that she's obtained at least that CTE teaching certificate, moving towards a legitimate certificate. CTE is a legitimate certificate, but the certificate that she's teaching.
Perfect. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve all certified personnel employment actions as presented.
Second.
I have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes. 7.3, Classified Personnel Employment. Dr. Farnsworth, please.
The good news is with all those resignations, we've been able to find replacements. And so you can see a lengthy list of people that we've had great committees and we've been able to secure those replacements for those positions.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve all classified personnel as presented. Second.
I have a motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes. 7.4, Certified Personnel Employment. Dr. Farnsworth.
So again, that situation that I explained where we're taking that teacher out to be an interventionist, this is the teacher that's gonna take her spot at Nicholas. And then you can see those extra duty stipends. In terms of the district safety coordinator, I'm excited for Mr. Clark with a long background of police work and S.R. work to kind of help me work with the district on securing, beefing up our safety protocols across the district, enhancing our training for our administrators. There is a need there where we just, I need help in making sure we are training our staff, training our administrators, following safety protocols, making sure our campuses are as secure as possible and he's gonna help me do that.
Will there be a new manual that's developed through all of this?
So...
Along with the training and...
That's a great idea. So tonight, in one of the later action items, we are taking for board approval the emergency action plan. He will help me make sure that that's up to date and that will be our emergency bible, if you will, to make sure that we're following those protocols and procedures and updating that as we go.
Okay. I will move to approve all certified personnel employment actions as presented. I believe they're classified though, aren't they?
7.3 was classified, 7.4 is certified.
So all certified personnel employment actions as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion to second. Any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes. 7.5, Administrative Personnel Employment. Dr. Farnsworth.
So if you remember, a couple months back, we brought to you the job description for the transportation supervisor to help with our transportation needs and it took us a while in terms of advertising, finding the right person. I'm thrilled that our committee and our transportation department, we feel Mr. Somerville, who's here tonight with his wife, so we're recommending him to be our next transportation supervisor. I also want to point out that Matt Jones, who's been a foreman for our district for years, due to some salary discrepancies, we're gonna elevate him to a supervisory capacity, which we need on the maintenance facility side. And so I recommend that you approve both of those individuals and that new job description for the facilities maintenance supervisor with those extra duties.
I'll make a motion to approve the administrative personnel employment actions as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Welcome.
Motion passes. Yeah, welcome. We're glad you're here. 7.6, Retention Payment for Classified Staff Counselors, Social Workers, and Certified SLPA. Dr. Farnsworth.
This is, Shately kind of talked about this earlier. Do you guys have any further questions or discussion items?
Thank you for making it work. We wouldn't want to not do this when it is what we promised, so thank you for seeing it through and figuring out how we can do it. So I'll motion to approve the retention payment as presented.
Second.
I have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes. 7.7, High School Foreign Exchange Tuition Waiver. Dr. Farnsworth.
Mr. Marchant couldn't be here tonight because he's at the Next Steps big get-together with a bunch of businesses at the high school. This is just a procedural item. We should have been bringing this to your attention every year because we do get foreign exchange students and the board has the right to either charge tuition or waive tuition. Next year, I'm recommending that we charge a little tuition that could, those monies could help offset some costs in different areas, but for this year, we're asking you to waive it since we didn't communicate that in advance to the foreign exchange students or those providers.
I move to waive the tuition as presented.
I have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. 7.8, Junior High Robotics Stipend. Ms. Davis?
So Mr. Gillespie had presented a proposal to ask for an additional assistant and stipend to help with the junior high after reading it and with recommendation by Ms. Clark. I agreed with his assessment and we may, we'll assess it again in FY '26 to actually possibly add another assistant because he currently has 50 servants in the high school and then an additional 20 in the junior high and only have two assist, well, him as the lead coach and then an assistant for that many students. We feel that he needs that additional assistant with this stipend and so we recommend that you add the additional stipend, which is the 4%, which we feel is a good stipend percentage for the junior high. So that's what I'm recommending for him, for this fiscal year.
I'll make a motion to approve the junior high robotics stipend for school year '24, '25 school year.
I'll second.
I have a motion to second. Any discussion? I would like to say that the things they're doing in that robotics department is just really, really awesome. And it's allowing some of those children to do things that they've, you know, never been able to do before, so I think it's just great, so...
And it's growing a lot. It's no wonder they need more help.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes. 7.9, ASBA By-Law Changes. Dr. Farnsworth.
We received this document from the Arizona School Boards Association with their updated revisions and changes, so at your discretion, would recommend that you would approve those.
I move to approve the ASBA by-law changes as presented.
I'll second with Courtney being the person that votes. Can we do that online?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes. 7.10, District Emergency Response Plan. Dr. Farnsworth, sorry.
No, that's fine. As mentioned earlier, Mr. President, that in my investigative work, I could not find where we had taken this to the board for approval. It had been discussed in the safety committee for several years and there were notes and different things. I felt it was important that we made the changes and we brought it to you for an official board stamp of approval. This is our district emergency response plan. The state is coming out in the next year with more changes on the safety emergency plan, which we will need to update, but this is something that, thank you for approving, Mr. Clark. He is gonna kind of take the lead in helping me make sure we're in compliance and have the latest safety protocols in place, so then we can then train our staff on what is the most efficient and safest way to do different drills.
I move to approve the district EOP plan as presented.
Second.
I have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes. 7.11, Emergency Relocation IGA. Dr. Farnsworth.
So during this review of the emergency plan, there may be an event where we may have to relocate our students if we can't relocate within the district. And so I reached out to the superintendent of Blue Ridge, Dr. Wright, and he was kind enough to agree that if things were pretty serious, we needed to relocate, we could go to Blue Ridge where they would kind of help house our students and our staff for relocation and reunification. This is just a legal IGA drawn up by our legal counsel that just blesses that relationship. We're not trading any money or services, but he's agreeing to help us if we ever needed that.
And is that reciprocal?
They didn't ask for us to reciprocate, but we would absolutely do that if they were in a similar situation. Whether we had an IGA or not, we would absolutely help them.
I move to approve the emergency relocation IGA as presented. Second.
I have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes. 7.12, Superintendent Goals. Dr. Farnsworth.
So we've worked at this in executive session and I had the pleasure of working with Mrs. Board Member Schultz and so these are the 30,000-foot goals, if you will, and I've already started to put some action steps in those. This is an evolving document and my expectation is I will come back to you in January for a mid-year check to see what feedback you have for me and I can give you all a report, but I would ask that you would adopt these and approve these and then if there's any future feedback, we can discuss that in January at the mid-year review.
I move to approve the superintendent goals for Dr. Joseph Farnsworth as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes. 7.13, Facility Use Agreement. Dr. Farnsworth.
I want to thank Ms. Davis. She really kind of looked at our old forum and updated it and modernized it. We did look at the fee schedule, which is in the facility use agreement. We asked Ms. Whipple to put her eyes on it with the Fine Arts Booster Club, so they evaluated the fee schedule and we have since modified a few things and then we're bringing it back to you for approval because it does have a fee schedule for anyone that rents our facilities.
Did our attorney happen to take a look at it?
We did not send it to the attorney. We based it on our existing facility use agreement. If the board would like me to do that, we certainly can.
I just know they were involved in the past, so there weren't really any big verbiage. No, just, or...
And the standard protocol, just so the board is aware, anytime a group, whether they pay or don't pay, they have to fill out the facility use agreement. It puts it on the calendar so we know who's in the building. They have to have a million-dollar liability policy to cover them and to cover us and then there's the fee schedule. So there may be instances where the community group, the fee is waived or there's a nominal fee, but that's the structure that has been taking place.
I appreciate, I know Scott was involved in that as well, so thank you guys for working on that.
I was gonna, we did send it to the attorney last April.
Okay, great.
We got the facility information adjusted and we also got the student waiver, both days coming, both those kept.
From there. Okay, cool. Thank you. Thank you. I motion to approve as presented. I'll second.
Motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes. 7.14, GCU Personalized Opt-In Admissions Data Agreement. Dr. Farnsworth.
So Grand Canyon University has approached me and what this is, is they're asking permission that we send them our demographic information for our graduating seniors, which will allow them to send the graduating seniors information regarding scholarships, potential acceptance into Grand Canyon, and then the student and their parents have to opt in if they want to pursue that further. It's pretty similar to what the United States military does. They have complete access to our students and their demographics and then it's up to the parents and the kids to either pursue that or not to pursue that. It's very clear on, we're only gonna share specific information as would be on a transcript because we do want to keep their information safe and secure and so do they, but GCU has been very active in trying to recruit and also giving kids the opportunity who may not realize they may go to college, GCU wants to make that option available.
I think the main issue I had with this...
I think the the main issue I had with this is that I did talk to you on the other day about. And I just kind of wanted to share is when we're doing things like this, I think it's important to think about what is our criteria for saying yes or no. They asked, so does that all we? Does anyone who asks, would we give them this information or are there certain criteria we want to kind of use to be like? Well, this is an organization. We're okay having this information and this one maybe not. So what? How do you know the difference between those? So I would just want everyone to kind of think about that if that if we do. Allow this this organization to have that information, just kind of, you know, what organizations? How would we be making that decision on when to say yes and when say no? We don't want. You having our students' information because I think, you know, our students' privacy is important. You know, we need to be careful about who we're sharing that with and why.
I I think that's a great point. And when I talk to Board Member Schultz, we don't have a criteria of who we give information to. Some of my my reasons is many of these kids are turning eighteen or already eighteen, so they're considered an adult. This is regarding post-secondary education, not not selling their information to a credit bureau or some kind of company. And so that's why I made the decision to bring it to you for approval. Because I I just don't, I think it's a great opportunity to share with our community here on the mountain. You don't have to stay on the mountain if you if there's other educational opportunities you may qualify for. And universities are kind of like, well. See us if you want to see us, talk to us if you want to talk to us. And GCU has taken a different approach, like they're going to pursue our kids and say, here's your degrees. Here's some, here's some financial aid you may qualify for, but I totally understand.
Be clear, they're pursuing them because if they can get more students, they get more money. I mean, it's not completely altruistic on their.
Oh, sure. They're they have a bottom line, right? They're 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 there to generate revenue.
More students for them is more money for them.
Is there no way that we can? Flip this and make this available to the students to pursue first and okay? That data sharing beforehand?
In my conversations with the GCU representative, they found that 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 is not work. And that's pretty true.
And I can understand why.
Like if if you're just waiting for someone to knock on your door versus. They're going to send a letter, they're going to send an email and they're going to say, hi, Joe Farnsworth. We want you to come to GCU and then you have to opt in to pursue it. But they're going to take the first step. They're not going to leave it to chance. So that's their approach.
We've already given their information to the school. Without asking them, is that what we're doing?
I'm not sure. I'm not clear on your question.
Just because GCU, you know, wants that information on on the students, do we ask them before we send that information to GCU?
No, we would not. We would. We would. Basically, if the board were to approve this, we're we're going to give basic information off the transcript to GCU. And then GCU would then turn around and they would contact the kid.
Just basic information.
Basic information.
I'm guessing you're going to give them John Larson and my grades and they're going to look at that and say. Well, he has a propensity towards science, so let's. Package something for him that would be.
It would be like GPA, class rank, ACT scores, SAT scores. Basic information off the transcript. And then they would, they would then in turn go, John Larson will be a great GCU candidate. We're going to pursue John Larson and then it'd be up to you to then. Move it forward or not. And as I was telling Ms. Schultz, and I don't, I can support either way. As I was telling Board Member Schultz. When my two kids. When you fill out the FAFSA, which is the federal. Application for financial aid. We would get postcards from all over the country and we didn't even ask for it. In fact, I got a postcard yesterday for my son who doesn't even live with us now. To go someplace in the Midwest. So it's pretty standard. We're not selling their information, but we are entering an agreement with GCU saying, yeah, we're we're going to give you seniors. And this is the basic information. So.
We'll be in no way violating.
No, no. And it spells that out in there that that they're very.
I just want to make sure. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the GCU personalized opt-in admissions data agreement as presented by administration.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Seven point one five paper educational support system. Dr. Farnsworth.
So in working with the high school principal. They are very excited about making sure every kid has a four-year plan. Not only through high school, but then what are their goals after that? This document, which we did send to legal and they made changes per our request and have sent this back. This is a online software system that allows our counselors. To track what classes kids are taking, what's the CTE endorsement? What what kind of post-secondary education plans? That we that we as a public school have to keep track of for these kids. And based upon the recommendation from Mr. Merchant, this is the best program that they found. That helps them keep track of all that information for each kid. So this is an internal software that they use to monitor the kid's progress, their freshman, sophomore, junior, senior year.
I move to approve the paper educational support system as presented.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Seven point one six partner partnership with Khan Academy.
Have you all heard of Khan Academy? So Khan Academy was developed by a gentleman by the name of Sal S A L Khan. And it started out with him doing videos about math, algebra, geometry. And then sending it to his nieces and nephews because they were struggling math. So it's like a tutoring, started out as a tutoring platform. It has since, and we're talking decades, it's been probably. Twenty years or or more. It has since been adopted by the College Board who does SAT. And they have hundred, not hundred, lots of classes online of video tutorials of content. Where you can log in and says, I don't know how to do differential equations. And you can hear him on a whiteboard drawing out how to do different differential equations. The cool thing that I'd like to recommend to the board is they've. Gone into a partnership with the Arizona Department of Education because they have developed an AI chatbot, artificial intelligence. Called Khanmigo, which is a really interesting virtual tutor. And it's built around their Khan Academy educational platform. So it's education-based. Versus like ChatGPT, you could go in and search anything and do anything. Khanmigo is really focused on. Educational content, English, math, science, social studies, and that's what it's geared towards. It is totally free for the rest of this year. The Department of Education sent me an email saying, hey, we got this partnership. Khan Academy is very well, it's very reputable. And so artificial intelligence can be kind of scary, but they've put parameters in place. Where the teacher can see the chats. If a kid, for example, says, I want to kill myself. That alerts the teacher and it redirects the kid like, hey, that's not something we're talking about. We're supposed to be talking about geometry. So it really has some really cool safeguards. And so I'm recommending that we try this pilot program. Eighth grade, ninth grade, tenth grade, eleventh grade, twelfth grade would be the pilot program. Where we get these licenses for free. And then our teachers and kids can try it out. To see if this is something we need to move move into. Artificial intelligence is only going to be more and more integrated into education. I like Khan Academy because it's all about education to begin with. That's that's what their bread and butter is. I've been on several webinars. I I like the safeguards. I think it's safe. I'd I'd like to be a pilot district with ADE and Khan Academy. So that's that's my recommendation. I don't, if you have questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
I'm I'm assuming that we'll use this the rest of the school year. If it works well for us. We'll visit. Well, either way, if it doesn't work or if it does work, if you want to continue with this.
This is a great way for us to test drive it, to see what it can do, what it can't do. What are the safeguards? Fully understand all the safeguards.
Are we going to have? If we like this and we want to pursue it, is this something financially that we'll be able to pursue or is?
That will be a conversation towards the end of the year because they do have pricing, right? Five dollars per kid. It may be lower than that. Ten dollars a kid. It's it used to be a year ago, it was thirty five dollars a kid because I looked into it when I was in Texas. It's now around fifteen, ten-ish. So that will be something like if we go that route, and I don't know, then what other software programs would we give up because this can do that?
Okay.
We also like it because some of our students with special needs. It's it's really a good virtual tutor. Like you can type in, help me write a paragraph about Romeo and Juliet. And it will code like, well, what do you know about Romeo and Juliet? Well, I know it's a love story. Well, this is that, you know, it doesn't just give them the answer. Like if you go to ChatGPT and type it in, it will give you the answer. This coaches the kid on, well, what do you know? Why do you want to do it? Well, let's start out with an intro. Do you know what an introduction starts with? And it kind of prompts the kid to really partner with the the chatbot.
Have our staff members been presented with this? Are they behind it or?
They have not seen it. We do have an AI task force that we started last month. I've I've talked to them about it. Because what we're noticing is that. In Sholo, we don't have any parameters on artificial intelligence. And so we have teachers using all types of stuff. And I'm not okay with that. We so we have a, we have an AI task force between this junior high and high school. Which has teachers on it and they're going to be looking at what AI features are we are we is appropriate? What's not appropriate? What is Sholo going to be using? And maybe we're not going to be using it and what grade level should use it, what grade level shouldn't use it. So those are the kind of questions that the the task force is tasked with looking at. And then we would bring that back to the board to say, look. Khan Academy is one of those. Maybe it's ChatGPT. So those are the things that we're investigating.
And it would be brought back to the board, what the findings.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Because it's such a hot topic on, there's a lot of good things, but there's also a slippery slope. I would want the board to have have that report to see what what we're recommending moving forward. Right now, since we don't have guidance, we have people doing all sorts of stuff, which concerns me.
I think if we remember at our ASBA conference, this was a pretty hot topic. So I'm interested in. Getting a handle on that sooner than later.
And there's more and more companies that are coming out of AI because they know they can sell it. And so they they haven't gone through the vetting process. Versus Khan Academy, they have, that's all they do is educational tutoring. They're, and it's really been a nonprofit for many, many years.
I'll move to approve the contract services with Khan Academy as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Seven point one seven additional cooperative purchasing FY twenty five. Ms. Davis?
So when a vendor reaches the hundred thousand mark, we have to bring that to the board for approval. So here's a list of the four vendors that are reaching that mark now. Southwest Food Service and City of Sholo, we haven't paid them that much, but their purchase orders are set for this amount. So we need to bring that to the board that will be reaching that figure. Special Service Consortium as well, that we brought to the board last month to approve for special education and then. US Bank National is our credit card company, so we'll definitely be hitting that at a hundred thousand. So I bring this to your for your approval.
Why in the world do we owe City of Sholo that much money?
As for our SROs.
I move to approve as presented. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Seven point one eight sole source vendor. Ms. Davis?
So we have one sole source vendor, which is our Huddle software, which is used for our sports. All our sports. Activities. And this is what all the AIA. Schools use for their sports activities. So it's the only software that we can use for that. So it's a sole source.
I move to approve as presented. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Seven point one nine audit property disposals. Ms. Davis?
So I'm sure you noticed the document for this one was quite large. So the last documented inventory was back in twenty sixteen. And based on the USFR, an inventory is supposed to be done every three years. For regular purchases and for any federal grant funded. Inventory items, it's supposed to be done every two years. So to satisfy this audit requirement, we are supposed to do an inventory every two years. So this last year, Heinfeld and Meach did an inventory for us and so they went through and did a very extensive. Search of all our inventory items. And so anything that they could not find, we just automatically disposed of them. So that's why that list was quite large. So this is the the list that we're recommending that the board approved to dispose of all those items.
I'll make a motion to approve all school property items for disposed or dis. Disposition as presented by administration.
Second.
I have a motion and a couple of seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Seven point two zero school properties disposal. Ms. Davis?
So this is the the monthly disposals that we bring to you if we have any disposals. So you'll see that we have four. Buses that need to be disposed of. They no longer are are operational. And we can't make them operational. So and we did purchase two other buses, brand new buses because of this. And then some just miscellaneous items. So I asked for your approval for these disposals.
I move to approve all school property items for disposal as presented. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Seven point two one student club. Dr. Farnsworth.
Well, I am pleased to recommend that our that our alternative school wants to start a student council. Which I think is great that they want to be involved in some kind of club and activity. And so I think a big shout out to Ms. Reagan Roach, our our alternative school. Manager administrator. She's kind of coordinating that and fostering that relationship. So I would recommend that you would approve. The student club at WMI.
I move to approve the club as presented. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Seven point two two overnight field trip. Dr. Farnsworth.
So our junior high robotics has a robotics tournament December the fifth through the December the seventh. In Flagstaff. And as you can see on the supporting documents, they've they've got Mr. Gillespie, another teacher. And then a husband and a wife as chaperones and they're anticipating about twenty kids going. So. I would recommend that you would approve this overnight robotics trip for the junior high robotics.
I move to approve the overnight field trip as recommended. Hi Robotics.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Seven point two three student fundraising activity. Mr. Farnsworth, Dr. Farnsworth.
You you can see that there's a plethora of fundraising and it's it's doing concessions for the variety of groups. Are there any questions from from the board members regarding these fundraisers?
I move to approve the student fundraising activities as presented.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Seven point two four gifts and donations. Dr. Farnsworth.
We have a lot of gifts and donations. And as you can see, the the first one up there, which was from our our football field, it got revamped. Perkins Cinders for, that's a huge donation. And then a lot of these other donations, if you were at the. And then, a lot of these other donations, if you were at the high school celebration for their A-rating, they got these donated to hand out as gift cards and certificates and different things to their staff members. They had drawings. It was kind of interesting. So, however many years you worked at the high school, you got that many tickets, and then you could write your name and go around and put them in different buckets, very similar to the Sholo Youth Foundation, and then they had drawings, and you could win different items. And so, that's where the bulk of these things came from, was for that celebration.
Typically, we've read these out loud. Would one of you do so, please? Stacy, please.
It's online. It's online in Board Docs. You can log on and look at all this stuff. It's online in Board Docs on our website.
Thank you. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve gifts and donations as presented. Perkins Senders, 77 Subaru, Schwarzer Engineering Laboratories, APS High Line Vending, the Elks Club, Darren Reed Foundation, Pizza Factory, Pizza Factory again, Pizza Factory again, Hatch Toyota, and Sholo Ford. Thank you very much.
Culvers and Pepsi.
Oh, shoot. I didn't go down for that. I'm sorry. Culvers, Pepsi, Allegra, Yosipiti, Arizona Wildlife Park, Monet Real Estate Services, Carl's Jr., Yosipiti again, El Alberto's Subway, Sholo Youth Foundation, and Sholo Ford.
And I'll second the motion with a big thank you to our donors as well.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes with extreme gratitude. 7.25 Future Agenda Items. Anybody have anything? Are we in a position yet to start talking about the eval in general for the superintendent? Are we getting close to where we want to?
We talked about doing it in January.
Okay.
Doing the check-in and then doing the formal evaluation later.
Okay. All right. If nothing, item 9.1, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment with our next meeting being December 12th.
I move to adjourn. A second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you all very much for coming out this evening. We appreciate your attendance and your comments.
We would like to have a work session on the December to start talking about the revised budget.
Perfect.